Midwest City Council, meeting for June twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Welcome, everybody. If you didn't hear, if you're here to talk about a particular issue on the agenda, there are signup sheets down front, and please sign up and list the agenda item that you wish to speak to. Also, when you approach the podium, we would ask that you give your name and address, just so we'll have a record of who is here. So with that being said, I would like to invite Mr. Sullivan down to offer the invocation, and I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Please stand.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that we've enjoyed in the respite from the heat. We thank you so much for that blessing. And, Father, we ask discernment and wisdom be upon this council tonight. We thank you for their willingness to sacrifice their time and their personal lives to serve in this way. Father, it's a calling, and we thank you for their willingness to represent their wards in this city in such a great way. We ask that their decisions tonight be for the good of the whole, and that you give them peace in those decisions. Father, I'd ask for a blessing of peace and protection on men and women who are serving us in harm's way all over the world, those who are serving us tonight as we speak in this community, across this state as well. Father, give them protection, and we just pray that they arrive safely back at home, whenever their deployment is over, or whenever their assignment today is over, that they are back with their families safely. We thank you so much for Jesus and the blessing of His sacrifice and the blood that was shed on our behalf. We thank you so much for that sacrifice, and it's in His holy name I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Be seated, please. We now move into community-related announcements, and Mr. Lyon, will you lead us off on that?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. July fourth, City Hall will be closed. However, our compost facility will remain open on Saturday, July second, but it'll be closed on the fourth. Okay, so, July second, it will be open to take out limbs, if you're cleaning out your yard or trimming trees. Monday sanitation and recycling scheduled pickups will be moved till Wednesday, the sixth. If you have a Monday pickup, please have your containers at the curb by seven a.m. on Wednesday, July sixth. The quarterly bulk pickups will begin on Tuesday, July fifth that week, since sanitation will be off, so starting on Tuesday, bulk pickup in the given area that is assigned. What zone is that? Zone three. July is full of wonderful, family-friendly events, beginning with, on July fourth, at Joe B. Barnes Park, at six p.m., is our Midwest City Annual Tribute to Liberty. This year features music by the Andrews Sisters Tribute Group and the Wise Guys Group. We have seven food trucks throughout the park. We'll also have a limited supply of giveaways for children. We encourage you to bring your lawn chairs, cold water, and sunscreen, as we celebrate our country and freedom. The fireworks show starts at what time, Vaughn?
Ten.
Nine forty-five?
Yes.
Nine forty-five. Our next cruising for coffee is scheduled for Saturday, July sixteenth, at eight a.m. in the Santa Fe Parking Lot across from Lowe's on Twenty-Ninth Street. We have our Fourth Friday Films Event on July twenty-second at seven p.m. at Charles Johnson Central Park at Sooner Town Center. The movie will be The Addams Family Two, and music will be from The Mystery Dates, with food available from upbeat treats, and kids can participate in costume and contest, and a tropical slide. Sounds like a good, good family event. On July thirtieth, we're hosting our annual Daddy Daughter Date Night, starting at two p.m. for daughters three through fourteen. Tickets are fifteen dollars. Light refreshments and a photo booth will be provided. Carriage rides will also be available for an additional cost. Any questions about any of the events, go to our MidwestCityOK.org website, or call seven-three-nine-one-two-eight-nine. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. Ms. Eads?
I actually have a question. This time of year, we often see a lot of concerns and complaints being addressed about unauthorized fireworks. Does anybody have a comment they want to make? Chief Porter, I don't know if you do, with regard to calls about unauthorized fireworks, or any concerns in that regard?
Either Josh, you want to talk about that, or one of the chiefs?
Sid's...
Sure, come on up, Sid.
So, we understand the complaint and the concern, and both, the police department and I have both, especially on the Fourth of July night, they'll just be going off all over the place. You know, for the last seven years, as chief, we've tried to figure out what to do to combat this, and there's really no good case to do it, because by the time we find out, if a neighbor calls and says they're doing it, by the time we get there, we don't see anybody, the fireworks out possibly, so we can't, we haven't seen them do anything, light it, so there's nothing we can do. It goes on to the avenue of whoever saw it would have to sign the ticket to make the complaint to go there. It is illegal to do fireworks in the city limits of Midwest City. We don't sell them here. The only place people get confused, because in Crutcho, right there on Air Depot, there's a section of property that's cut out that's county. It always has a fireworks stand in it. There's nothing we can do to stop it from going in there. We just know, we usually put it out on our social media. I know that Josh does a lot with the city, has in the past, they'll put it out that it's illegal. If the citizens do call, and you can watch our call notes, they'll light up, especially on the Fourth. You'll have ten to twelve that are just, by the time we get there to address them. It's done. Fire trucks, the big trucks have gone before, and you'll see a bunch of people there possibly lighting, and as soon as they seen the truck coming, they scatter. We try to stop, make sure it's not going off anymore. As soon as we drive off, they're lighting it as we go behind. So it's really a daunting task, and really to try and enforce something on that. It's just really overbearing, and I don't know what the right answer is for us to be able to stop that and eliminate it.
And I understand the situation that you all are dealing with. I guess my question, too, just goes to, do you want them to go ahead and call in with the complaint, if they have a complaint? Can they go ahead and sign a citizen complaint if an officer responds? Because I've had, in past years, constituents complain, they called in, they were told no one will come out to address the complaint, and that there's nothing that they can do about it. So just for the sake of tonight's session, edification, and knowledge, which way are we going with this?
Well, he'll answer that one. We'll tell you that most of our citizens, if they, we have had, like, some of our big box, because they get loaded at their distribution centers, and they don't know the laws. Once we've seen, we've been to some of our big box, because the citizens have called us and said, hey, they're selling fireworks. So we go, and they get confused. The pop things have a string on them as well, so it looks like a fuse. But we send our people out, and they check. And we have caught sparklers, which are illegal to be done in the city limits of Midwest City as well. We've been, and we just take them, make them pull them off the shelf, and they box them up to send them back. Whether or not to call, we always tell everybody to call, but that's up to...
Yeah, we tell everybody to also call. Fourth of July, we have thousands of people at the park, and I'll just be honest with you, that's my priority, is everybody comes there, has a good time safely, and goes home. It's kind of like, you know, I get calls all the time on speeders. Well, I want to make sure that people aren't, anything violent happened to them or anything, and we get busy sometimes, and the priority of those go down. And I'm sure what happens on the Fourth of July is the same thing. E O C, ECC is just inundated with calls coming in and coming in, and they don't, you know, they'll say, okay, they basically probably get a big chief tablet, write down the address, and they'll put them out as, you know, they'll put the call out, and if an officer's in the area, they'll go check it. But I would beg to differ, unless it's just extremely busy, but if someone wants to sign a complaint, because it's going to slow down eventually, we'll come take that. If they, you know, obviously, if a car drove by, there's no one to sign a complaint, but if I go out and I'm popping fireworks, and Bert sees me and wants to sign a complaint, he can do so. You know, just possession of it, we can't do anything. We have to actually see them doing it. And that's just how the ordinance is, unfortunately.
Hey, Sid, can the neighbors, if it is busy, they can show up at the police station the next day, or the next week, or the next month, and swear out a complaint, can't they?
Yeah, it's, you know, I wouldn't wait a long time. Obviously, the city prosecutor...
But so what I'm saying is, the citizens, we all have a responsibility, and if the police are too busy on something like that, which I totally get, they can show up the next morning, and they can file, they can file out that citation.
If they felt that strongly, and they wanted to do that, and I'm popping fireworks, and she sees me and knows how busy it is, and she calls, or comes down, the next thing say, hey, I saw Sid blowing fireworks, I want to sign a complaint, we'll let her sign the complaint.
My point is, sometimes, as a citizen, our job is not to sit and wait for the law enforcement to come to us. Sometimes, it's our responsibility to get off the couch and go down to the police department and help them out.
Yeah, we're going to answer the calls and try to take care, but we just, I mean, it takes a community, and all of y'all, I mean, we all know how busy it is, and I've been here for a long time, and we've always had a great time out there at the park, because of the great job that everybody here does, and we want to continue to that. And I know it's frustrating, but I mean, I think everybody's heard fireworks go off at their house sometime. It's just, you know, if someone just continues, you know, if he goes out there for an hour doing it, it's one thing, but he pops a few, and I don't hear anything back, I'll let it go.
I'll try not to do that.
I appreciate that.
Chief, can you make, Chief, just so we're clear, you come to my house, and I want to sign a complaint against Ryan, I'm going to court. You're not going to court, I'm going to court, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's something we've actually shared on our social media today. Actually, we call it our friendly annual reminder that fireworks are illegal in Midwest City, and it explains that you will need to sign a complaint if you are making the complaint, and have police actually come out to the location. And that information page also has some resources about why it's important that you respect this particular ordinance, and actually has links to the ordinance as well. And we can actually, we're going to distribute that tomorrow through our email subscribers. So it's already out on our social media, goes out by email tomorrow.
Thank you all very much for that, and for that social media push also. Thank you very much. That being said, I would just say, we certainly encourage everybody to come out to the Tribute to Liberty, where we're authorized to display fireworks, and everybody can have a great time. Then, the other thing I wanted to do was give a compliment, commendation, however you want to phrase it, to Ms. Bain. I had a constituent who contacted me with a problem with her roof, and she lived in a duplex, and she had had a roofing company come out, tried to replace it. They said they couldn't do it unless they got to do both sides of the duplex. And because of some confusion on my part, that I believe that Councilwoman Bain's husband was with a roofing company here in Midwest City, I drug her into this mess with me. But together, we managed to muddle through and get this constituent with a local roofing company, and the constituent actually texted me today and said her new roof is on, and she's very happy, and she's very thankful to both of us for our efforts to help her out in getting that done. So, you know, along with our O-MAG training tonight of working collaboratively and as a team, thank you very much, Councilwoman Bain, for all of your help with that, and I have at least one happy constituent tonight. So, absolutely, yes, to the first husband, too, absolutely.
All right. Does anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Yes, ma'am?
I'll try to get through this real fast. I want to acknowledge the commemoration of Juneteenth National Independence Day, which was officially recognized as a federal holiday in June of two thousand and twenty-one by President Biden. Juneteenth is a celebration of the emancipation of the enslaved African Americans, and recognition of the June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five announcement of General Order Number Three by Union Army General Gordon Granger in Texas. However, it took decades after the announcement for African Americans to experience freedom across this nation. It took more than a century after the emancipation of enslaved African Americans before Black Americans were granted equal treatment and equal protection under the law through the struggles and achievements of the civil rights movement. I would further like to note that even in the twenty-first century, African Americans still experienced systemic discrimination and racism. The genocidal acts of slavery committed in this country has caused generational trauma and poverty, still impacting many families in the African American community. It takes all of us to overcome our past and to commit ourselves to building a nation free of discrimination and racism. I am proud to note that on Monday, June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Midwest City Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Prayer Breakfast conducted its twenty-fifth annual breakfast in celebration of the work and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and in commemoration of Juneteenth. We should all celebrate the fact that our beautiful city is on the forefront of progress, equity, equality, and diversity. I want to thank the Midwest City Martin Luther King Prayer Breakfast Committee members, President Anthony Douglas, John Billbury, Diana Johnson, Angela, former Senator Angela Monson, former Senator Anastasia Pittman, Rita Maxwell, our very own city attorney, Don Meisch, Dr. Ann Allen, Mike Bowers, Joyce Thurman, Terri Fields, Christine, former Councilwoman Christine Allen Price, Cindy Van Clay, Elizabeth Camper, Marcus Hayes, Rebecca Ross, and Mr. William Jones. Now, I also want to acknowledge that June is Pride Month. To the LGBTQI community, happy Pride Month. You are loved, you are cherished, and you will be respected. I also want to acknowledge that, as an elected official in the state of Oklahoma, I see the attacks being made against your inherent dignity, identity, and your rights to equality through homophobic, hate-driven legislation by Oklahoma lawmakers. I love you, and I stand with you. I want to wish Councilwoman Eads a very happy belated birthday. Councilwoman Eads, I also want to express my sincere gratitude to your diligent representation on this body, and as a new member of this body, I've been very grateful to your questions and discussions, as Megan and I are learning a lot as we endeavor into this. And finally, I would like to express my gratitude and appreciation to Assistant City Managers Sullivan, Mr. Bundy, Patrick, and Jeff, whose last names I did not get, for taking the time to educate me and to feel about the drainage and stormwater efforts. And I want to remind residents that our staff are consistently working on addressing any complaints in regards to drainage or any stormwater issues. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Well, now we can actually get on to a proclamation that I really don't want to give. Anyway, I'll come back. If you've ever... Is this on? If you've ever come to our customer service area to pay a bill or get a permit, and you've met this smiling face standing next to you, and she's irreplaceable. She eats and greets our citizens professionally and gladly, and I'd say that you're beside his entire. So we have made it a tradition to honor our employees that have served our city and our citizens for so long, and the least we can do is give them a day. So, Michelle, this is going to be your day. I tried to get Tim to give you his money, but he wouldn't do it. Whereas, Michelle Key's began her career with the city of Midwest City in September of two thousand and four as a utility service clerk, and is retiring in two thousand and twenty-two after eighteen years of faithful service. Whereas, throughout the years, Michelle's proven to be a professional, exemplary employee, being dependable, able to work independently as well with others. Whereas, it has been noted of Michelle that she presents herself well to all customers, showing them respect and courtesy that they deserve, and always willing to help others and share her knowledge when time allows. Whereas, she's been a very active member in her church and the community, and always that she is the face of City Hall. Whereas, Michelle's wonderful life attitude has been influential in creating a positive atmosphere in every, in an ever-changing office and time during the past few years. So therefore, I'm Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, hereby proclaim June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, is Michelle Key's Day in the city of Midwest City. Do hereby urge everyone to show Michelle the appreciation she deserves for her outstanding service to the residents and merchants of this city.
Let's ease Michelle today, that I was going to embarrass her. But, Michelle, in recognition, in special recognition, Michelle Key's for loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of the Midwest City of Oklahoma, September ninth, two thousand and four, through November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's a very short eighteen-year time, I believe, and we've been here eighteen years. It is amazing. Michelle is, as my grandmother would say, Michelle is a God-filled woman, and I mean that in the highest compliment. She is... She is a great example to the employees, and she's gone through a lot of change in that department, and I am very proud of the way you guys have gone down here, you and Senator Susan Mulendorf, you guys are doing a great job, and you're a great example to those people. I've called on her to be an example, because there's times that things weren't like they are now. There were times when things weren't great, and I've always called on Michelle, please be a good example to these people that work in here, and she always has been. And I'm going to miss you, and I've already told you to retire and come back and work part-time. I'm serious, but... So, we're going to miss you, and thank you for your service.
Those are always hard, especially, you know, we, before you guys got here, we were taking a test, and part of the test is we rate ourselves and how we're doing, and she is an example of a ten, as far as our employees and how hard they work, and it's hard to lose employees like that. It's hard to replace them. So, best of luck in her new retirement. I now enter into the consent agenda of our agenda. These items are placed on the consent agendas, so that the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by a motion. If any council member requests to discuss an item, or if a unanimous consent cannot be received, then the item or items will be removed and heard in regular order. The chair would entertain a motion to approve.
Actually, I was going to ask to see if we could pull item twelve, fourteen, and twenty-three for discussion, please.
Motion to approve all of the twelve?
Hold on just a minute. Twelve?
Fourteen and twenty-three. Please, thank you.
Motion needs to reflect that. Please verbalize it, so we got a...
Got a motion from three M. over there.
I have a motion, properly formed motion, pulling twelve, fourteen, and twenty-three, and I have a second, all in favor, indicate saying aye. Oppose? Extension, motion carries. Mr. Lyon?
Item number twelve, discussion consideration, including any amendments there to renewing for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, Department of Community Development and Engineering and Construction Services contract with R.L. Shears and H.W. Lochner. That's Mr. Harless.
Yes, I'll be glad to answer any questions on that.
Mr. Harless, I've received multiple calls on the Mid-America Park. Many individuals are very ecstatic about the trail that's been put in, and looking forward to some of the ongoing developments. I just thought this would be a great opportunity for you to give us a sense of what we should expect as we make more progress in Mid-America.
Yes, the Mid-America Park has been one of our pet projects in our department for a few years now. It was, we did a design on it several years ago to try to get funding on it, and I think that design was kind of parlayed into being put into the geo-bond, so it was one of the geo-bond projects. During that time, we did what we called Phase One, which is the trail that went in there, and a very nice trail, if you haven't been down it. Right now, with it being a geo-bond project, it was underfunded for what needed to be done, or what was promised to the taxpayers, and we've been working with Terry Craft in the Grants Department to get, we're hoping to get another million dollars through some grant funds for that. But in that time, while we're getting funds for that, we are doing the contract to, for construction documents on the second phase of that, which will be the Compan Playground System. I think a lot of y'all saw a couple of months ago at one of the slideshows, and we expect the construction starting for that second phase, that it'll be restrooms and a pavilion and a lot of other things. It's actually going to be really cool. I'm very excited to see it, but it'll be in the winter of twenty-three for the park itself. And I don't know if you want me to expand on the bridge or not, but that was a project that, the bridge needs to be replaced. We received some grants, some funding for that, some federal funding for that, and we are in the design process of doing that. So at the end of each year, we have to redo those contracts so that we can continue to work on them, so.
I just wanted to say thank you so much. I know it means so much to the community that accesses that park, and every time they call me about something, I try to tell them there's more developments, that I'm not the best spokesperson on this issue. I know you've got more details. So thank you so much for providing more information for those tuned in, those in attendance tonight. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, it's my pleasure, and one of the things that I left on was, like, Phase Three will include the disc golf course, which we've hired a national-recognized disc golf course architect to do the preliminary design, and when we get ready to do that, he'll come back in and lay that all out, and do all that, and do the clearings out of the tree and stuff. So it's a good project.
entertain a motion to approve, Ms. Banner?
Move to approve, thanks.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate saying aye. Oppose? Extension, motion carries. Item fourteen, Mr. Lyon?
Discussion consideration for adoption, including any possible amendment of Supplement One to the contract with Poe and Associates, Inc., and an increase of fifty thousand seven oh eight for a total price, contract price of two hundred and fifteen seven forty-one for the purposes of developing construction plans for the Midwest Boulevard Resurfacing Project. Mr. Bundy?
Thank you. I'm available for any questions.
And really, I asked, again, just to ask for more additional information and background. I know I've also received some calls about sidewalks and drainage, and I know that our staff in our city is consistently working on improvements, both with sidewalks and drainage, and I thought this would be a good moment to just provide more information to those present here tonight, and those who may be joining us. Thank you, Mr. Bundy.
Sure. So this project was identified some years ago, received federal funding... Sure, so this project was identified some years ago, received federal funding to resurface Midwest from Twenty-Ninth to Tenth Street. Typically, we only do one mile of roadway at a time, but we are gonna do all three miles. All three miles need resurfacing. And in addition to the resurfacing, we'll be doing some sidewalk work largely on the south end. There are some sections that don't have sidewalk. We'll also be addressing the drainage near, I'm trying to think the name of the road that comes in, near the Atkins Place. It typically has standing water in the roadway during rains. And so we're gonna add a storm drain system that's going to take that water off the roadway. It's been needed for some time. But it will be an improvement to what we have now and be a nice smooth roadway with some sidewalks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bundy.
I entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve, thank you, Mayor.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Item twenty-three, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration, including possible amendments of declaring seven Chevrolet Impalas and their contents as surplus and authorized in disposal by public auction, sealed bid, or other means necessary.
Good evening.
Yes, ma'am.
My favorite chief in the whole entire world, thank you for being here. Chief, I just have a question. I've had cases, and not out of Midwest City, I've never experienced this in Midwest City, where sometimes police vehicles or equipment that may have been involved in incidents that give rise to criminal charges are auctioned off. And then the defendant hasn't fully addressed the charges and may be a pending ongoing case. And then we go to look for the vehicle. For example, I've got one specific case out of another municipality right now where the defendant, a year in, waiting. The vehicle involved, where it was alleged that was involved in an accident with a cop, has already been auctioned off. Do we have a process at our police department where before we auction off vehicles or equipment, we make sure that such equipment was not, is not potentially evidence in a unresolved criminal case?
Now, all these cars are old police units. And these, I don't have any idea of anything impending on that. Obviously, if we had some type of civil litigation, I would know by our city attorney. But these things are basically, they're worn out, they're, a lot of the parts are, you know, old, they don't work anymore. But I do not, any of these things, and I really personally don't know of any litigation or anything that we have here in Midwest City involving any type of complaint or anything. All complaints are gonna come through me anyway after it's investigated. And I don't know of anything that this would involve any of these.
Yeah, I don't either.
The only time that I could think that even would be an issue, Ms. Bana, is if the police vehicle was involved in some type of fatality accident. And then it would have to be maintained for evidentiary value. But that, I don't know that we've ever had an incident like that, to be quite honest with you.
Is there an easy way to check to alleviate her fears and make sure none of those cars are?
I don't think I have a fear. And again, and I know this based on my experience with our police department, we really don't have those types of incidents. But I just wanted to just ask as a matter, because I've had this experience in other municipalities, that there is a mechanism that before we sell equipment, we're verifying it's not potentially evidence in an ongoing case.
Yes, ma'am, as Mayor Dukes stated and the city manager Lyon, that we don't have anything right now on any of that.
Thank you, sir.
Hope to never have to have that.
Absolutely agree.
Thank you.
Chair, entertain a motion, Ms. Bana?
Move to approve. I promise I'll get a hang of this, Mayor, thanks.
That's what we're here for. I've got a motion and I do have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Moving to discussion items of our agenda, discussion item number one, Mr. Lyon.
PC twenty-one, twenty-one, or twenty-one eleven, public hearing with discussion and consideration for adoption, including any possible amendment of a resolution for a special use permit to allow the use of automotive sales and rentals light in the C-three community commercial for the property described as part of the northeast corridor, section nine, township eleven, north range two west, located at twenty twenty-nine South Air Depot. Mr. Harless?
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. This seven, a point seven-three acre area of request is currently the site of a transmission shop. The applicant has requested a special use permit for the additional use of automobile sales and rentals light. The applicant would like to sell cars in addition to its current uses as a transmission shop. Planning Commission recommend approval of the application at the May third meeting. And as you may recall, this was on the twenty-fourth agenda and was pulled. And so we re-advertised it to be heard again tonight. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Is the applicant present?
I believe they are.
Could you step forward for just a second, please?
Mr. Mayor, council members, we appreciate you taking our application and considering our, yes, S U P. I'm Sean Dirksen, I own Double-A Automotive.
So, sir, I have a few questions. So the area where the shop is located currently is, as Mr. Harless stated, not quite an acre. And there's also sidewalk in that area. How many cars are you wanting to put on the property for sale?
At our automotive business, excuse me, occasionally we will get a mechanic's lien on an abandoned vehicle. And in those cases, it would help our business to be able to sell those cars. That's our intent in this request. We also have completed our application with the Oklahoma Used Motor Vehicle and Parts Commission so that we will be compliant in that regard.
And I appreciate that. But again, my question goes to how many vehicles? Because what I'm looking at here is the space available on that lot. And then also depending on the inventory and number quantity that you want to carry, the available space for customers to come in, because you've got an active service center going on there, correct? So you've got cars coming in there for servicing, correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And then you've also, if you're gonna carry an inventory of, I believe you said used cars, you're going to have people coming to look at those cars, and they're gonna need places to park, et cetera. And you sit right on Air Depot and just north of the intersection with Lilac and Air Depot and right across the street from a strip mall, essentially. There's a lot of traffic that goes through that area as it is now. And I know that because I stood at that intersection countless times, waiting to make a turn in either direction type of thing, neither go north or south. So I'm just trying to appreciate kind of like the volume of traffic that you would be adding, as well as like the volume of cars you're looking to put on the property.
It'd strictly be on a case-by-case basis. And in the past year that we've been in business there, we've taken two. So that is our, probably, I would say, two a year is what we're looking at right now.
Okay, but you were saying you added, you've applied for licensure to sell used cars also. So is that in addition to the two like that you've had mechanics liens on?
Well, our intent is to be compliant with the rules and regulations where we're a community. And we want to be a part of that. In the year that we've done business, we have worked really hard to beautify our business and in turn beautify the city. We're proud of our efforts and what we've done with the shop. I submitted some pictures, but I didn't get the cool big pictures to show you. But we have painted the shop and we just resurfaced the entire parking lot.
It's now royal blue. I noticed it from the time you painted it.
Not anymore, no. It's battleship gray now.
Battleship gray now, type of thing. It's royal blue, I believe, in the photos that we have of it, type of thing.
My sons and I are about halfway through recoding the roof as well.
I gotcha.
Summer project.
And I appreciate the beautification to the business, but the bottom line is, to answer my question, in terms of the number of cars you kind of want to inventory to sell, do you, you don't have an estimate as to how many cars that would be?
I would say if there are more than five, we want to comply with state rules. And that's why we went ahead with the application. And that's within a year's time, and that's their rules. So that's why we did that, because if we do sell more than five in a year, we don't want to get in trouble for doing so.
Okay. And then in terms of the number of cars that you usually have on the lot in a given week for mechanical servicing, about how many are we talking there?
We don't have any sitting in the parking lot. We have a large area behind the shop where generally we'll park cars, and it is fenced in. We also have an application with the city for replacing that fence right now. And we don't plan on storing any cars out in the front on our new pretty parking lot.
Okay, all right. So even the cars that you have for used inventory, you'll be putting those in the back?
Everything will be in the back, yes.
Open for business, would that be a fair way to put it?
Correct.
Okay. So you don't really anticipate having a problem with parking between the vehicles that you're gonna place out front for sale and your cars that are coming to the shop for servicing and/or to visit your inventory of cars for sale then?
No, ma'am, I don't, I don't think that'll be an issue. We're gonna ensure that we keep our parking lot as free and clear as we can, as our neighbors also use our parking lot for overflow.
Parking for their businesses?
Yeah, it's pretty obvious that we couldn't do that to us because of, like I said, with our neighbors and depending on their usage on either side, because they're kind of cyclical in the times that their customers are there.
Are visiting.
And so they'll overtake that, like, you know, at the vet, they use that of an evening. So they're using our parking lot a lot at night.
Okay.
So, sorry.
Go ahead, Sean, I'm sorry.
So at no point are your plans to go down to the auction and buy three or four cars to put them up there for sale?
Auction, no, sir.
You're not gonna consign other people's cars or anything else like that?
No, sir.
Only use you're going to do is for those that have failed to pay the bills, if you've gotten a clean title on that you're gonna sell to recoup your money?
After a mechanic's lien, yes, sir.
Okay.
So if I understand you right, and I don't know the used car, the mechanic lien law, but before you could sell a car with a mechanic's lien, you need a used car license?
No, sir, the, and in reviewing the regulations and in working with the city, we found that if you do have occasion to sell more than five cars in a year's time, you have to obtain that license. So we went ahead, completed the application process, and I have also completed the training with the commission.
Well, you've done an excellent job, you know, I can't, I can't have many, count how many times that code enforcement would be after Bill's automotive to paint his building and do all that. You've cleaned up the property really, really well, and we do appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We are also undergoing a process of redeveloping that end of Air Depot. And there are several projects in the works to do that. And to improve our gateway to Tinker Air Force Base. It's extremely important for people to get a good glimmer of what Midwest City looks like by driving down the main drag in Midwest City. And I will tell you, in some areas, it doesn't look really well. I'm gonna be quite honest with you, and I'm reluctant to even approve this or vote for this. But it's, from what you're saying is that the vehicles that you get on mechanic's lien, that they will be stored in back of the property and not stored in front of your property for sale.
Correct. That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
That's a very narrow strip, and there's not enough, there's not enough frontage for you to do that, to be quite honest with you.
And that's not our intent.
Most likely something, most likely something like that would need to come through as a PUD or a SPUD as opposed to a special use permit, as this is coming forward to put that kind of limitation on there.
I apologize. If we approve this and he turns around and sells his lot in year two or three to somebody else, and they've got the permits and everything else, they can then park as many cars up for sale as they want to, so long as they don't violate our code?
Depending if the Used Parts Motor Vehicle Commission permit is transferable, but even if it's not, then could somebody else come in if they purchased it and get a permit to sell used cars and then attempt to fill a lot full? That could happen, yes. Either through a transferable or obtaining their own permit.
The only thing is, special use permits only good for twelve months, according to the application.
No, it doesn't get a certificate of occupancy within twelve months. What we're doing here ceases to...
See, it would expire.
So so long as he gets a certificate of occupancy in the next twelve months, then this will stay zoned as well, until somebody...
Until somebody changes it.
I would say that...
Use has to cease for twelve months before it expires. So if somebody else moves in in eleven months, they can open up the car dealership, used car dealership, yes.
I would like to address that, if I could, please. Councilman Reed, we, that, that location has been in my family for fifty years. I don't think it'd be good for me to sell it. I don't think that my mom would let me do that either, sir.
So let me ask, let me ask both you and the city attorney something. If you don't have, you don't have any intent of displaying vehicles in front of your business for sale, and you've got ample storage behind your, and I assume that you're going to use the normal social media to advertise these vehicles for sale, or word of mouth?
That requires an additional permit to use the social media, so that wasn't our intent.
And why are we even discussing this?
Well, I have another question. You can get a wholesaler's license, and you can run them through auction. And you don't, and you wouldn't be able to put anything up front.
Why would, why would he need a special use permit for this purpose if he's got ample storage in the back, and he doesn't intend to display them up front? And he's gonna move the inventory as quickly as possible? The only other issue I would see is if the vehicle stayed in the back of his property and became dilapidated or run down where then it got the attention of the code enforcement.
But a wholesaler's license takes care of all this. You wouldn't need anything from us at all, because you have everything in the back. And you could run all these through the auction as a wholesaler, and you'd get your money a lot quicker with small wholesale fees, and your first loss is often your last loss.
I wasn't familiar with that, that licensure. I didn't know about that.
You can get a wholesale license from Used Motor Vehicle Commission, where you can wholesale vehicles.
Yeah, I was unaware of that licensure.
To answer your question, Mr. Mayor, I think it goes to a volume-type issue. Obviously, the applicant here has applied for a permit to be able to sell more than five at his facility. I'm sure that's in recognition of the fact that while he says last year he only sold two, there more may come as that would come along. And if he get, if he's in the business of selling vehicles and that becomes part of, part of the business plan, then that's when the permit becomes necessary. It's not, just because you sell one or two doesn't mean you need one. It's whether you're actively conducting that type of business.
And it's my understanding from you that these are only vehicles that you repair, and for some reason the person couldn't pay for it, so you've put a lien on it and you hold it for, in lieu of payment or in lieu of sale. And I assume that there's a time period between the transaction and the time you can file for sale, correct?
Yes, sir. And as stated, we, as our business increases, we just saw the need to apply for the permit because our business is increasing and we're growing.
I'm gonna move to approve.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have any, other than applicant, anything to say about this particular motion? I do have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One. One, I'm opposed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes sir.
Since there is one opposed, you will need a roll call vote.
Uh, sure, why not?
Award one. Two, three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Six.
Aye.
Mayor?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members.
Move to item number two.
PC twenty-one fourteen, public hearing and discussion considering for adoption, including any possible amendment of a resolution for a special use permit to allow the use of automotive sales and rentals light in the C-three, uh, community commercial zoning district for the property described as Lot Two and the north ninety-five feet of the west fifteen feet of Lot Three. McCorkle Park Edition, addressed as twenty-two twenty-four South Air Depot. Mr. Harless?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Lyon. Uh, this point three-two acre, uh, area of request is currently the site of the, of a finance office. The applicant has requested a special use permish, permit for the additional use of automobile sales and retail light. The applicant would like to sell cars in addition to its current use as a finance office. Uh, no one offered a public comment concerning the application at the June seventh planning commission meeting. Planning commissioners voted to recommend approval of the application via five to one vote. Chairman, Mr. Smith cited the lack of parking for his vote against, um, actions of the discretion, discretion of the council. In addition, I might note that this is also, uh, an area that's been, uh, outlined or, uh, targeted in the original mile, um, it's actually a revitalization plan for the original mile, uh, December two thousand and eleven, area as a, as a, uh, uh, area for redevelopment as a, uh.
Walkability district?
Walkability and pedestrian area. Um, and also in the two thousand and sixteen, uh, sense of place, uh, for the original mile was also outlined in that area. Um, this place is a node for, uh, a gathering place for, for walkability and, and, uh, to put emphasis on planning and, and moving forward with that type of development. Uh, if you remember pa- in the past couple of months, we also passed a, um, uh, PUD for a, uh, pub house, uh, restaurant, uh, a couple of, uh, hundred feet down south of this, um, and we'll start the construction of water line and sewer line improvements in that area, um, in addition. So I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Hello, Paul Crossfield, at twenty-two twenty-four South Air Depot.
Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you for being here with us, we appreciate it. Um, so, excuse me, I'm gonna ask you similar questions to the former applicant, because, um, the area of request is even smaller with regard to this facility.
Right.
Um, plus it's right next to, um, an improved intersection, um, that also is going to, in the very near future, um, be including one lane on Adair being a, a bicycle lane. Um, so there's a lot of traffic that goes through that intersection, and you have very narrow frontage there in front of your business location coupled with sidewalk that's already present. So how many vehicles do you, uh, anticipate, uh, selling through this location?
Well, uh, we've been in Midwest City in business for forty-eight years, and we've always had bigger lots, but I'm really ready to retire, so I moved to this smaller location and was told it was C-three zoning, so I knew that's what used car operation would be, so I didn't check on anything else, and we moved in there with the idea, we still have over three hundred people that were carrying the financing that are paying us payments, ninety percent of them we do on a debit card or credit card, so they don't come in and out. But there is repossession, and throughout the course of this next year, I'm go- I'm planning on, everyone will be paid off within about thirteen months. And the cars that are coming in, we have about seven reposessions right now, and they're in the back. Couple that we got ready and had in the front, and this was what Chairman Smith was concerned about, I had two vehicles in the front. But the, the dispensary next door had, they parked their cars, they back them right in there next to ours, and he thought that those were ours, but they're actually were that, uh, a five-star Kush. But anyway, to answer your question right now, we have a, a total of about ten cars, but we can park those two in the back and keep that clear, but the five-star Kush is still gonna park theirs, it's the two employees, they always park right there in the front, so.
If you tow them once, they won't.
Do what?
If you tow them once from parking in your spot, they'll never do it again.
You tow, if you tow them?
If you tow them for parking in your, on your lot?
Oh, well, they're not over, over in our spot, but they back in and it makes it look like, you know, our two, and then the two of their employees, and Russell thought that all four of those cars were mine, but it was just the two. But we can move those two around back, we have plenty of room. There's comfortable space in the back for about thirteen cars. So we could just, 'cause we sell everything that we do sell on Facebook Marketplace, so we don't need to be in the front.
Well, but you have been in the front. I mean, I drive through that intersection countless times during a given week, and ever since your location has come there and what you're categorizing as a finance office, you've had vehicles in front of it that appear to be for sale.
Right.
And, and you're saying that you've had repossession and et cetera, and so you have up to ten vehicles, so you've had cars actively for sale in front of the business?
We have, but that's what I'm saying, we can do it from the back.
Okay.
We just had them out there just because we didn't realize that that was gonna be an issue.
Okay, but bear with me as I work my way through this, and I, I recall you had the location up on Sooner, near Reno.
Right, and then we were at I forty and Sooner for forty years.
Mm-hmm. So, um, now, at this location, you indicated that you believe that you had authorization to sell cars there and then discovered that you don't, correct?
We discovered that we need the special use permit, but C-three was, I knew that's what we needed for automobile sales.
Okay, but, um, you've been selling cars without the special use permit for several months, would that be true at this location?
Yes.
Okay. And so you're saying that you can move all of your vehicles to the back, um, and then is your parking for folks coming to look at vehicles, um, and you're parking for your employees at this location, is that also in the back then?
Well, we have five parking spaces in the front. And this is where we had two cars out there like today, there's two cars in the front, but then next door they have two, but, you know, it's on their side of the dividing line.
Right.
But we can move those two around back, and then there'll be five spaces, but we have very, very few people that are coming.
In person to see you at the, at the office location? Would that be a fair way?
We've sold six, we've sold six cars this month is all, whereas when we were at I forty and Sooner, we used to sell about a hundred cars a month.
Right.
But like I said, I'm really trying to retire, and this is just collecting the notes, selling off the repos, but I have to have my license to be able to sell the repos.
When you applied for a CO with the city, what was, what instructions were you given on what you could do with that building? 'Cause I, if, if I, I think at one point I was told that you were, uh, had applied and you were instructed that it was a business office. There wasn't gonna be any, you couldn't sell cars or anything there, you could, there's an, and you were told that?
Well, they told me that, uh, and then I, that's when they.
Okay, were you told that you couldn't sell cars there by the city when you applied for your permit to occupy the building?
Uh, one of the clerks told me that, and I asked her what I needed to do, and she said she didn't know, and then I talked to Michael Pew, and he said I needed to apply for a special use permit.
Okay, so you were told that you can't sell cars there?
And I would need a special use permit.
And you went ahead and did it anyway?
Well, they said, and the, the, the state told me that until, that, that my license would carry over from before until we got this worked out.
But the city told you you couldn't do it, correct?
They just told me I needed to apply for it. They, they didn't actually say I could not sell anymore, no, they did not tell me that.
Who's Auto House Sports?
That's me.
Car? Is that you right there? That's your business?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and it says buy, sell, trade, and those are the two cars that were parked out in front of your business today, correct?
Yes sir.
That doesn't show the, the, the marijuana dealer next door, right?
I think if you look.
But it doesn't, I, those are your two cars?
Those are my two cars, yes.
Okay. And the issue I have is that we've been down this road before about people coming in after the fact to get licenses and stuff, and it's exactly opposite of what the guy ahead of him did. He did it, and is doing it proactive, disappears like it's a reactive, and is that a picture of what it looks like behind your business right there?
Yes sir.
Okay, and that was taken today too. And I go by there all the time because I frequent, uh, a groomer, dog groomer, gets a lot of my money every month, and I've seen a lot of cars parked out in front of that business. And then today, I just happened to drive around back, and there's a lot of cars back there, and they may be repos, but the thing that concerns me is that when you went and dealt with the city, and they told you, you could do this as a, you could do the business part, but you couldn't sell cars, you put up a sign that says you're gonna sell cars, and it wasn't until after the fact, because now you need a license, that you're coming back to us, because I don't think the state will give you a license unless you have the permit to do it.
Well, I have a license, I've had a license for forty-eight years, the same license, but they're not gonna transfer it unless I.
Correct, and that's why you're doing it, because the state won't license that part. Okay.
Once again, uh, I'm gonna have to chime in here, uh, we're trying to improve the appearance of Air Depot.
Right.
So now we've got marijuana shops and used car dealers. Uh, and that really, really shows a good entrance into Tinker Air Force Base. Would you, you've been here a long time.
Yes I have, I moved here in nineteen fifty-nine.
So you understand that, uh.
I do, and, and when I bought this Ninja electric building, the wood was all rotted, it had gang signs painted all over it, and I've.
I don't, I really, I really don't care what it looked like then, the code enforcement was working that, uh, uh, as a deal. But as Councilman Byrne pointed out, you know, oh, I got caught, I gotta go down to the city and take care of this.
No sir, that's not, that's not the way it happened.
Let me, let me, let me say a couple of things. One, I don't really think that we should denigrate any legal business in this community, whether it's medical marijuana or car.
Okay, well, we can discuss that offline.
But we shouldn't, because they are legal regardless of how we feel about medical marijuana or not. Second, there might have very well, I'm sorry guys, there might have very well been a misunderstanding. We shouldn't go to the assumption that Mr. Crossfield's lying to us, because he assumed that he had this proper zoning when he bought the building. I've known him for forty years. There very well could be a misunderstanding, but it's almost like we're calling you a liar.
I'm not.
No, I apologize, I'm, I'm not calling, it came across as calling you a liar, I apologize for that.
But I'm looking at the paperwork that you filled out for the occupancy, and it says that type of business, auto finance, it doesn't say anything about auto sale. And I think that's, it's your signature, I think, on the bottom of it, so that's what I was going off of, that you had filled that paperwork out, and that's what, so I'm not saying that there may, there may have been a misunderstanding, but this is the documents.
At that time, we thought we'd be able to just collect our notes and then close in, in, in a year, but then we realized, well, some of these cars are coming back, we're gonna have to be able to sell them, and we're gonna need our license to take them, even take them to the auction, we're gonna need our license.
So your needs have changed, bottom line?
So let me ask, I have a question that I asked the gentleman earlier. If need be, you could get a wholesaler's license to run everything through the auction, and you can directly wholesale to the public sometimes too, right?
No, you cannot sell to the public wholesale.
But you could if need be, as we talked about earlier today, but you could with be.
You could, but then if you get a retail customer that comes in and wants to buy one of the cars, let's say that somebody turns a car back into you and it has a nine-thousand-dollar balance, and, uh, you know, if you take it to the auction, it's gonna bring seven. If you have someone that, that is willing to buy it at the retail price, you cannot, with a wholesale license, you can't re- retail it to them. So this is why I'm just trying to get my license transferred from Sooner Road to here for twelve more months, and then if the city needs my property, I'd be willing to sign something that I'll sell.
No, we, we don't need that.
So I, so I stepped in on Matt's toes a second ago, wasn't accusing him of calling you a liar. But do you also understand, I'm gonna ask you, you understand some of the questions that Matt asked?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely, that's what I'm here for.
Well, and I'm just gonna ask the follow-up question, because, uh, when you were at the Sooner Road location, did you have a special use permit to sell cars at the Sooner Road location?
No, and it was a, it was a, uh, industrial, and I guess it covered the C-three, and so I didn't need one.
So this special use permit was?
Right.
A new?
It was a whole new thing to me, I knew that C-three, because we were C-three at I forty and Sooner for, for all those years, and so I knew C-three was what I needed, so when I, the realtor told me it was C-three, and now I understand now too that the guy that actually owned the property knew about this development and everything, and nothing was ever told to me, I probably would've just moved on and found another place, but it looked like it, that it would work, you know, for the finance and.
Right.
So it's your, it's your plan in at least thirteen months to be totally out of the business?
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, forty-eight years is, uh, I'm tired.
It's always been my experience that you've always dealt in high-end sports cars and that, is that still the?
We used to, mm-hmm.
I'm gonna.
And it, it is, is your plan to continue to keep them in the back?
We, we will put everything in the back, and that way there'll just be the part, the our five parking spots will be if, if someone comes in, but.
I don't believe even if this passes, the code would allow with the, the frontage to have it for sale up front, would?
I don't believe.
So, so if this passes, you need to understand, if one of your cars has a stock sticker on it, you can get a ticket for that?
Yes.
If it's parked up front?
Yes.
Am I correct?
That would be fine.
Am I correct, Tim?
Let me defer to Mr. Stroh, where's?
Let me ask a question at the same time of Mr. City Attorney, real quick. Can we give him a special use permit that is limited to thirteen months? Thank you.
To my knowledge, and I can only speak to my knowledge, I have not read anything either in state statute or in city ordinance that, uh, gives the city council that kind of authority to limit the duration of what a special use permit would be, and then have, let's say, a reverter interest back to something else.
So is that, well, hold, give me one second if you would, I apologize. Is that something that you could take a look at and we could have this issue come back before us? Because from what I'm hearing, and we'll let Mr. Stroh confirm, it doesn't appear this gentleman's gonna be able to park those two cars for sale in front of his business any longer, even if he were to get this permit, so.
That, that, you, you are correct, that would be something I would need to research further. I have not done a complete re- researcher review, just from what I've read so far, I've not seen that authority anywhere.
I don't think Paul has the time to wait for another month, when did the?
Uh, July one is when the state used motor vehicle has said that I have to have this cleared up.
So Don, it's kind of a take off of her question. He proposed doing it for twelve months, that was his proposal first. If he approached and we agreed to it, since we're both agreeing to his proposal, could it be limited then?
Again, that would be something I would need to research further.
Okay.
Well.
Well, if it can be done, I'll sign it, so.
And the word "special use" implies that it's short-term.
Okay, here's a better question, can we give him a temporary thirty-day license? Can we give him temporary thirty-day certificate of occupancy, so he can keep his license with the Used Motor Vehicle Commission through July, and we come back and figure this out?
Let Mr. Stroh come up here and tell us where he can park cars.
Well, he can't answer that question that I just asked.
I think so.
I believe your question is where can he park, and your second question is temporary.
Well, my question is for him, can we give him a thirty-day temporary?
That's a zoning thing, and I believe we've done that, get to, given temporary COs before, correct?
Well, we've given temp.
We, we've given temporary COs when something needs to be done, like it's raining out and, and they're, they can't put down the sod, or there's some things that have been done weather-wise.
So we have an attorney that can't answer a question in a timely manner that needs to be done by July first, we don't convene again until July fourteenth. So this would be a extent, what's the word I'm looking for? Extenuating circumstances, like rain or whatever else. This is not at the fault of the applicants, and it's not at Don's either, he just got thrown some questions that he needs to research. So worst-case scenario, could we do a thirty days so he stays compliant with the used motor vehicle? So worst-case scenario, could we do a thirty days while he stays compliant with the Used Motor Vehicle Commission? Until we figure out whether or not his original idea, which was, I'm more than happy to let the sun set after the end of twelve months, is something that we can legally do, because he's the one that brought that to us originally. It's not like we asked him, hey, would you agree to this? He's the one that said it to us. I'm more than willing to do it twelve months.
Yeah, it's not, it's my understanding that there, you, you can't have limited time on, on zoning issues. I mean, that's, that's, in general, that's a, a fair statement, is the way I understand it. Is there some loophole out there that, that could be followed? I don't know. But in general, you can't, you can't just...
My question isn't about whether or not we can do this for twelve months. My question is, can we do a temporary occupancy permit until we reconvene at the end of July?
He has an occupancy permit right now.
But not that satisfies the Used Motor Vehicle Commission. Can we do something temporary to satisfy the Used Motor Vehicle Commission until we come back the end of July? Can Don or Billy answer that question?
I can't give him one.
Billy, keep, Billy, keep talking. I may have found something.
I, I don't think that I can, I, I couldn't give him that, because it doesn't fall within, within the land use. And so, part of the CO is part of the land use.
Let's, let's let Mr. Stroh answer the question of the vehicles up front, really quickly, so we know that.
So, parking-wise, if he's owned, the only thing I can get is for a side triangle issue coming off the side road.
What, I'm sorry?
Side triangle, it would be the only way I could get him coming off the side road that you couldn't see. So if he is in those actual parking spots that the weed shop and, and the car shop have, or finance shop have, he can legally do that, the way it currently is. Yes, those are legal.
Those are legal if, if he has a special use permit.
Correct. I mean legally parked cars.
Can he, can he have it for sale there in front of the business if he has the special use permit?
Yes, but what's gonna happen is like the, the gentleman that came to you guys from Reno and Sooner, when his customers or anybody else shows up, or even him as an employee, we're gonna give them a citation then for being parked past into the sidewalk slash street right away. Correct. But I could, correct, I could not give him a citation for selling a car out front per the zoning.
Pat, when did he make application for certificate of occupancy?
He signed it December twentieth of last year.
Don, your lip...
So we've been in there almost six months now?
Well, I, just from my memory, and people have asked me that, there was some rehab that happened to the building before it came out of town.
Yeah, the permit date was December twentieth. And then you said, it's the name of the business is Auto House Finance, Use Auto Finance. It's his name, his address, the date. And just, you screwed, I can see what...
We, we didn't actually move over there till March, but that's when I had sold the, the building on Sooner and that they took possession.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I know you mentioned multiple times that you're looking forward and preparing for retirement. So I guess one of the questions I have is, if you are permitted and you do retire and you maybe plan on selling the building, you own the building, right?
I do. I, it, it, it just will depend. I mean, from what I understand, the city wants to develop that area. And I told Sean today that if, if they need me to sign something, that I'll sell it to them, you know, in a year or what, whatever.
We can't tie any kind of zoning to it.
Yeah, that's, so, anyway, I don't have plans to sell it, but I would sell it to the developers or whatever someone needs at the time. Or I'll keep it, you know, I, like, if you're ever in that area, if you come by and look inside, I mean, it's filled with forty-eight years of auto memorabilia in there.
And it's all blown and moved.
You know, and it's, so it's, you know, for me, it would be, just be a place, even though I'm retired, and I've bought a motor home and I'm ready to, to do that now, but I have to get this all collected and get it done.
Don, did you find something for us?
Uh, I may have. And I'm reading out of section nine dash thirty-four of the city ordinances, sub-paragraph one-one-eight point zero, which, believe it or not, is entitled Certificate of Occupancy. Reading in paragraph B specifically says, whenever a building permit is issued for the erection of a new building or structure, an occupancy permit shall be required prior to occupancy. We all kind of know that. And then it says, next, temporary certificates of occupancy for a change in use of any land or tenancy or existing building or structure. Or for a new building or structure may be approved at the discretion of the building officer, but at no time shall a temporary certificate of occupancy be approved if any life, safety, or health requirements do not meet the cit, the ordinances of the city as determined by the building official. There's at least a provision in here for temporary certificates of occupancy.
If, at the council's discretion of the council, if they, what I heard you say, we could do a temporary certificate of occupancy.
The city ordinance puts it in the authority of the building official.
Okay. Would you feel comfortable that you'd have time over the next thirty days to figure out whether or not we could sunset a twelve-month or whatever special use permit?
I, I think I probably, if the city manager so directs me to do that, I think, yes, we could probably take care of that.
It's actually more than fourteen days once we meet July fourteen, right?
Oh, yes.
Well, but also, we also meet July twenty-sixth, so...
Yeah, July twenty-sixth really is where this would be on, because we're in a training program.
So then, really dumb question. Do we take no action to give the building inspector the time to...
Yeah, it doesn't, the council wouldn't have to take action this long, I mean...
If he's reading it, he says it's the building official that makes the determination.
Who's the building official?
I'm looking past you over there in the corner.
No, it's, it's Philip.
So...
It would be his determination.
Could be a staff member, but a building official's named.
So what he's saying is that, if he, if I...
I understand what he's saying, that under his circumstance right now, if our designee went out there and everything that in the building was in compliance with city code, and there wasn't basically any life safety issues.
Yeah.
Which is, you know...
Which we'll have to look at the backside of that building and where all those cars are to make sure a fire truck can get in and out of there.
Then if that would occur, he could get a temporary deal. Is that right, Don? Is that how you...
That's how I'm reading, how I'm reading the language in one eighteen.
I think we're getting caught up in semantics. We're talking about a special use permit. He's already got a certificate of occupancy, so we're talking, we're at, we're...
He's trying to change, which is what... No, there's a provision in that that he just read to us, is if you, if you have a certificate of occupancy and you're gonna try and change something, you can get a temporary.
But what we could do is take no action on this and let it come back to us in July, which would get...
But if we take no action, the building inspector doesn't approve it, he loses his, his license with the state.
When is your license expired?
July first.
July one, Friday.
Do you understand what we're talking about, trying to do?
I do, but if we're gonna do a, a temporary, couldn't we just do a twelve-month temporary?
I don't, I don't know what he's comfortable with, and I don't think the building inspector can do a twelve-month temporary.
Well, if it's...
He's the only person per, per charter that can give you a temporary certificate of occupancy, according to him, is the chief building inspector. It's taken out of the hands of the council. Did I hear you right, Don?
You did hear correctly for that now, to what the mayor is speaking of. We are talking about a special use permit to modify a zoning requirement, which is different than a certificate of occupancy to be able to occupy the facility, the, the structure that you are in to, but we're, and here, we're changing the use of it from auto financing to auto sales. But that, that is a distinction there, Mr. Mayor, that is not really encompassed in this language. Like I said, now, mind you, I, I'll give everybody this, I'm doing quick, down and dirty, looking at city ordinances, and this is definitely not something that's completely thorough.
So what we're about to do isn't gonna help him, under these circumstances?
That's a difficult question to, I, that's a difficult question to answer, but there's a chance, yes, that it, it may not assist.
Okay, well, I mean, I would feel more comfortable if we could issue this special use permit for a limited, you asked for thirteen months originally. And I understand that, you know, we don't know that that's authorized type of thing. So, in my mind, the only other thing for us to do is to either move forward and grant the special use permit or deny the special use permit, to give him a definitive answer in order to deal with him having a used motor vehicle licensure. Now, once again, Sean, I think you spoke up for this gentleman, and, you know, we're in a situation where I feel like he has improved that structure. It is very limited. There aren't a lot of uses for it. And so at this point, I'm just gonna go on a leap of faith and move to approve the special use permit open-ended, the way it was applied for.
Hang on, real quick, before we vote. So, Don, I'm gonna really put you on the spot. So can, can Councilwoman Eads make a motion to approve, subject to a thirteen-month limitation? And then it's up to you to determine the, determine after the fact.
It's always a good idea to make the attorneys the bad guys. Good idea.
After the fact, then you...
As I said earlier, to my knowledge as of right now, and from what research I have done, and that's just, mind everybody, what I'm talking about here is, I've read through zoning requirements in general, not focusing on this issue, but in reading through those zoning requirements that I have read so far, I have found nothing that gives the city council the authority to grant a special use permit for a limited duration of time. There are provisions, Rick, as we just ran into, that if you don't take action within twelve months, you lose it. If you work on it, if you work under that special use permit, but then cease to for a certain length of time, you lose your special use, things like that. To do what you're asking, Tim, and to do what you're asking, Susan, I don't know the answer to that. I, I apologize. I don't know the answer to that question.
So what's the worst-case scenario if we make a motion for exactly that, at the end of thirteen months, it goes away? What's the worst-case scenario that happens? It's an invalid motion? We have to come back, we have to come back later if you determine that it wouldn't?
Okay, so...
Because I kinda like your idea of making the motion that way.
As long as we're making the lawyers fall on their faces this evening type of thing, I'm gonna jump right in the whirlpool with Don. So I'm gonna revise my motion to clarify that I want to approve his special use permit application for a limited period, not to exceed eighteen months. And if it turns out to be invalid, in the city attorney's opinion, at a later date and time, then we'll have to deal with that as a violative action of council, basically. Don?
Uh, you would then have approved an action that was not allowed under city ordinance, so your action then would be void. And that would immediately throw the applicant into a, quite a quandary, because they would no longer have their special use.
Yeah, but he would have it at least on July first to make the Used Motor Vehicle Commission happy.
Or it would be approved, but not subject to eighteen months.
Exactly. But it probably would be considered void, and then he would have to come back and request it open-ended.
It wouldn't be void until it was ruled invalid.
Yeah, correct. That's my thought anyhow. Anybody wanna jump in this soup with me?
Hey, I seconded your, I seconded your, I was gonna do thirteen months, but eighteen months sounds good.
Well, he asked for thirteen, and in all fairness, he mentioned he may want to have a retirement hideout. My words, not yours, type of thing.
Are we about to take an action that's unlawful?
Don doesn't know.
That's the problem.
At this moment in time, I cannot directly answer that question, but as I said, from all research I have done so far, I don't, I have not found the authority for the city council to take this action. But then again, my research has not been completely thorough. Because what it, it's looking at our zoning requirements, looking at and answering different questions, and looking at special use and answering different questions, not looking as to whether a special use permit could have a limitation on it time-wise. Now, I will tell you, Sean, I did misspeak earlier, and there are certain limitations that can be placed on a special use permit by the, by the city council. And that's called a specific condition. And just to be clear, it says, the city council may impose specific conditions regarding location, design, operation, and screening to assure safety, to prevent a nuisance, to control noxious effects of, of, bleh! Of excessive sound, light, odor, dust, and similar conditions. That's not time. So I know you can do, I know the city council could put special conditions on a special use permit like that. I have not found time yet.
So, now I'm gonna ask you a dumb question. Is this city or state ordinance?
I'm reading city ordinance. I'm only looking through city ordinances at this moment in time.
So, but my question is, is...
And that, I will tell you, that is, you know...
On a special use permit, would it not make sense if we could, ordinance-wise, to make it to where time was also one of the special uses?
Thus, the implication of the word "special." It means special. It means a special time, place.
So can we, the, the committee that overlooks ordinances, can we look at this to see if you can add...
We can certainly do that. So I do have a properly formed motion and a second.
Can you redo your motion so everybody knows exactly what your motion is?
Yes. And, and let me preface this before I make this motion, okay? I, here's how I feel about this situation really quickly. It is one of two things. Either one, I had addressed the motion with an approval of the special use permit on a limited basis, not to exceed eighteen months. My alternative is that we approve this special use. We take this man, who's a longstanding business member of our community, at his word that he does not intend to operate this business longer than, he said, thirteen months. We're giving him a few extra months to wind it down, and as he said, he's got forty-odd years of memorabilia in the office that he'll need to do something else with if he goes away from having an office location and a business location there. So we either take him at his word and we open-ended approve it, or we do it on a limited basis type of thing. And so my motion was to approve it for a period of time, not to exceed eighteen months at this time.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? This is a public hearing. Does anyone have any, in the audience, have anything to say about this particular motion? Hearing or seeing none, go ahead and conduct a roll call with the city clerk.
Word one. Yes. Word two. Word three. Yes. Word four.
Yes.
Word five. Word six? Mayor?
No. Motion carries. Thank you for enduring the...
Thank you, sir, for appearing to the, my state. Can we take a short break?
We sure can. They stand recessed for five minutes.
I'm glad I took the over, Don owes us lunch.
Oh, my God. This better go quick.
Silly.
Two pictures, those are pictures from the curb on Fifteenth Street. And you can see there, that's my bedroom window. It's a two-story dwelling and that's the side that I live on. And so, uh, my concern, it's a, it's a beautiful piece of property. Be, be a beautiful piece of commercial for lots of uses. Uh, what I'm concerned about is, you know, if something goes in there that's a, you know, Wendy's or something like that, twenty-four hour or tw- or, you know, till midnight and you have the noise and the light and all that sort of stuff. Uh, be a really tough on me. So, you know, I'm interested in any sort of, you know, restrictions on the zoning and make it C three and don't let them do something that's overnight or, or it would be a, you know, cause problems for me. Or, uh, the ability to, you know, let me build a twenty-five foot wall there and I can take care of that, but, you know, up to, up to you guys, but you can see the situation that I'm in.
How long you lived there, John?
Twenty-two years.
And I'm sorry, can you explain this to me because I'm not understanding? Is this house in the picture, um, is that from your vantage point?
My, my house is white. And, and those are my bedroom windows and that's standing on the corner or on the curb of Fifteenth Street looking across the property that would be rezoned. So between where that's, where I'm standing there to take the picture, whatever goes in would be between where I was standing and those and, and my house.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Yep.
What is the distance from, I, I mean, I know the picture that you've taken there. Any idea how far it is from your house to where her property line would be?
It's, it's about square, it's almost square and it's one point nine five acres. So I don't know what the feet is. But it depends.
Billy, you know?
Approximately three hundred.
Three hundred feet?
Yeah, two hundred seventy-eight by three hundred is what it would cost me.
So from his house to the property line?
No, from the, the property is that deep. The subject property is that deep.
Okay.
So how far his house is off that?
Hey Billy, don't we normally see these when, uh, somebody comes in for zoning after there's a, a bid on the property or somebody's trying to buy it and we know what's gonna go in there? And that way, we're in a better position to say, no. Or the restrictions that he's asking for, the site proof fencing or the, you know, the lighting, there's, I mean, a ton of stuff. And I understand what he's talking about because he's, you know, it's right there by the ball field, it's right there by Sonic. And there's, I mean, it's a busy intersection, Mead's a, it's a very quiet road. Uh, you know, it's in my ward, so I know where it's at. So it's, uh, and I understand what you're trying to, you're trying to make as much money off the property as you can. And I, I respect that, but where that, there used to be a house there that was torn down and it just, it just troubles me that somebody would go in there and put a win- I, I love Wendy's, I wish they'd go in someplace closer, but a twenty-four hour drive-through or, you know, wouldn't be advantageous for that particular neighborhood, I wouldn't think. And I would rather they, because we get them all the time where somebody brings in a zoning request with a, with a bid or a, you know, somebody's trying to buy it. Sale condition.
They do contracts on the condition that it get, that it get, uh, uh, rezoned. And so there's a, we, we see a wide range of them. We see them where they don't have something, a, a prospect or somebody out there, they just do it as a prospective, um, sale type thing. And then we do it as, on, on condition of being, you know, that they'll buy the property on the condition that I get the sale, sale our plat, uh, and, and then, you know, just straight zoning when I know what's coming in and they're gonna do that. But, um, there, you, somebody had mentioned doing something a little lesser intense. Um, uh, you could go, you could always downgrade the zoning from C three to C two if the applicant, if everybody's okay with that. Um, I don't know if that cures all their, the, the, the concerns of, 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 uh, Mr. Caulfield, but, um, that is something I think that is an option.
Billy, just really quickly, rough estimate right now. How long of a period would it take if the applicant were to find a buyer who wanted to, um, have a use for the property? They wanted to purchase it contingent on being able to get it zoned as C three? About how long would it take to get that issue before council? I, I know it has to go through planning commission first. Is it sixty days roughly?
It's, it's at, at a minimum sixty days, um, but usually a little longer than that if it is perfectly. And, and they can write that in the contract.
Right.
That, that, and we, we publish those maps online and stuff, so.
Okay.
So what, uh-
I'm sorry, calendars.
What protections, uh, can we offer Mr. Caulfield to address his concerns? Twenty-eight year resident, same house. Kids grew up there, didn't they, John? So what protections do it, does he have?
I mean, another, another option would be to, uh, bring it back through a, a, a spud or a pud and, and, uh, put the restrictions that, that, you know, no, no businesses over this, that, you know, twenty-four hour businesses or past ten o'clock or whatever his concern is. Um, lighting can be an, could be an issue.
But a spud or a PUD doesn't come into play until the property's sold, right?
No, she, we could, we, we could redo the application to, to address those concerns and change it. We'd have to probably rea-
She would have to do that?
Yes.
So I'm gonna reverse Matt's right to be concerned, but as the property owner, how can we try and make both sides equitably happy here? And I like, I, I, I would rather do it if you sell it contingent because we don't just give a blank check, but we also have to not only watch out for the resident who's behind it, we have to make sure that the property owner's rights are just as equally protected as the person's property who's next to them.
Well, I, I'd like to hear from the applicant. We kind of shuffled her to the side. Did you have anything that you wanted to add, ma'am?
Well, one of the things is when my dad lived there before he passed.
Would you bring that down just a little bit closer to your mouth?
Okay, sorry.
Don't do that.
Um, my dad lived there, of course. There was housing to the east of him. It was actually, he considered himself out in the country and everything built up around him. Um, I'm not sure, my dad, I know I moved here from Tulsa area in ninety-two and you were not in that house at that time.
Two thousand, two thousand.
So he, he, he moved in in two thousand. But my thing is also is that in visiting with the realtors, they will not spend the money to promote the sale of the property without the zoning.
Are you getting residential or commercial realtors? Because I know plenty of commercial realtors that will-
This is a commercial realtor.
-and plenty of other property that has been sold contingent to.
And, and we have tried that with the first realtor and nothing came about it. The second realtor is the one that is pushing for us to go ahead and get it zoned so that they can put the money into the, the, um, advertising for this property.
Councilman Favors, you're, you're nodding an awful lot. Do you have something to add to this?
Yeah, I would agree, just because of the business my wife's in, that's normally what we see. They prefer that it's gonna be zoned commercial, um, because of the potential that you're gonna draw a lot more business type of people in and stuff and it'll sell for more. You've had that property for sale now for quite a while, haven't you?
My dad passed away, it'll be six years in December.
And so no interest as a residential?
No interest at all as a residential. Um, we finally did have the house. It was taken down. It, the parts of the house were actually moved, um, and hopefully are being rebuilt for a young couple. And so that made us feel good.
Billy, you mentioned something about changing the request to C two?
Yeah, I, I think that, uh, 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 an option would be to, to, she can re- request to change it to C two. And my understanding is that you all have the ability to act on zoning below C three in this case, and C two is below C three. Um, and it's a little, offers a little more protection. I don't fully understand all of his concerns, so I'm saying it's, it's less intense use. Um, the other option would be to redo the application and bring it back before you and get them to, get us all to collaborate and say, here are these concerns and we'll outline those in the, the, the spud or pud and, and, and identify those. And they will be written in the document and it carries with the property forward. And so when somebody, it would be a, a, a C three type spud, but it wouldn't allow overnight, um, businesses. Um, if we're concerned about dispensaries, it would not allow dispensaries or whatever the concerns are, um, you know, lives would have to be, do this or whatever the case may be, we could write those into the spud or the applicant could write those into the spud. And then we'd have to re-advertise it, go back before the planning commission and then come back before the council. So you're talking a few months, prob- probably three months, um, to, to do that.
Would that be a reasonable, uh-
What is the difference in a C two and a C three?
You'll have to-
C, uh, C two is a, a little less intensive. Um, again, I don't know exactly what the concerns are, but it tends, it tends to be, it tends to be more of a, of a, of an issue of more, it's more office type space, more professional. Um, uh, it's not, uh, the, not as much outdoors, not, not outdoor space. I'm not sure if a wind, I'm not sure if a-
Would be allowed in a-
Somewhat similar. Somewhat similar, that's next to it already, to the east. Do you have any problems with that building to the east of that?
No problems with the building. Sonic's a whole different story.
Yeah.
I can hear Sonic's-
But that Sonic's been there, yeah, that Sonic's been there for years and-
Yeah, yeah, but something like Sonic would be horrible.
Well, and I, I don't mean any disrespect here with this comment, but at the same time, the only way to absolutely guarantee your protection, sir, is for you to buy that parcel. And then you can protect it however you want to, type of thing. And I don't know if that's something that you've contemplated or not contemplated or have any desire to do. But, I mean, it's been for sale for six years and so, you know, it's one of those risks that come with, all of a sudden, somebody decides to kerplunk an apartment complex right in the middle of a residential neighborhood and you're just stuck with it if it gets approved. I mean, you know, that's an unfortunate situation. Um, but it happens and it happens by this council's action on a, you know, occurring basis. So, I mean, that's the only way to really guarantee you, you know, you get what you want and you get the protections you want. Um, and I don't know that, you know, what you're saying, ma'am, with regard to what you want to be able to do with the property, to be able to have a full commercial, um, marketability of the property would be sufficient to you out of C two zoning and, and that's kind of, I mean-
Well, I kinda like what I think Matt said, you know? I think we should try to have a win-win situation. You know, I don't, I don't see that I should just be the only one to lose because somebody can make a lot of money. When I bought the property, it was, that was, her property was own residential, you know? So, I understand, I understand that, you know, anything can change, but I'd, I'd like to at least see a, a win-win situation would be wonderful. If she can make a lot of money off of a C two versus a C three, that, that'd be great. I'd, I'd love to, I'd love to see that. And my, my opening comment was, that's a nice piece of commercial property. That was right there on Fifteenth Street, so I understand that.
Billy, is there, is there a fee if she was to redo it, C two?
Normally we would charge for the fee since they're changing their application.
Can we waive it?
I think, I think the city manager may have the ability to do that.
Can we-
I don't have the ability to do that.
Can we approve a C two tonight?
We, we could, we could approve a C two, but I think where the applicant's wanting to go and where they're, if, if time is not of a major issue, I think we can get them both where they want it to go.
Okay, how about we take, we take no action tonight?
Take no action.
Let them, let them talk, the, the three of y'all get together and bring, it comes back to us. In that way, if, uh, a C two is, can be worked out and agreed upon, then it's a win-win for everybody.
Ma'am, this is a public hearing, you can come down here and speak if you want to. You're welcome to come down here.
A C two or a PUD?
Yes, the property there with the Sonic and the Med Center and the Strip Mall, is that all C three?
Uh, ma'am, I don't know.
It's in the packet, let me-
I don't think so.
It's in the, it's in the packet. It's a, it's the property to the east of Mead is a spud. The property, uh, where the doctor's office is a C one. And then the corner where the, the seven eleven is a C three. And across the street where the church is at is a C three.
And all of those were put in after, of course, my dad lived there the whole time. And then there were homes there as well, across to the east. So I, I guess I'm, um, I, I don't know how to make him happy with less traffic and less noise, um, you know?
For years, then I interrupt you, but for years I'm part of my family.
Ma'am, could you step up to the-
Yes, my name is Lisa.
Say your name.
My name is Lisa Goodman and I live at, I'm part owner of the property there at ninety-eight oh nine Southern Address, oh, sixty-eight twenty eleven C, Oklahoma City. Bob lived there for years and he agreed to the commercialization. He dealt with the ballpark, with the lights, the noise, people parking in, our yard. They still do, now that the ballpark's not there, it doesn't, you know? And it's as, it's edge, how would we say? It's okay for all those other properties in the past to go to C three or end for us not to?
I don't think that's what's been said.
It's what it sounds like, you're wanting to put us to a C two.
Number one, none of us on this horseshoe could do anything about what happened twenty years ago.
Right.
Or thirty years ago, in, in, in some cases. We can't do anything about that. What we can do is look toward the future. Now, we're trying to facilitate your request and also protect a resident.
Exactly.
And that's what we get paid to do.
And we've talked-
So, you know, let's not even go there.
Okay, okay. We, we had a conversation today, John and I, and, uh, we visited about the property. And, um, you know, in the future, I'm sure that he's, he's not gonna be there much longer at that residency, in all honesty. Um, so what's he, you know, what will be the plans for that property?
Well, let me ask Rick a question real quick. If it's zoned Z two, C two, it's commercial, which opens it up for commercial realtors and if somebody comes in and wants it for C three, it would be an easier step to step up to C three if it came back to us, correct?
The, the realtor, sorry for interrupting you. The realtor said have it zoned for C three and it's easier then to get the C two.
To, to go down.
To go down, not to go up. And that's what we were told. And so that's why we applied for a C three.
And I can only speak for the few times that I've seen it with Teresa and, like I said, usually if it's commercial property and it's zoned C three, that's what they're looking for. And a lot of times people will come going, well, it's not zoned commercial. And why would I buy the property if I don't know it can be zoned, so?
But C two's commercial, so it was my thing, if we zoned it for C two, they could then wrap it as commercial property with the commercial real estate, realtor, correct?
It would, Dawn, I would assume it could still be listed as commercial property, so.
C stands for commercial.
Yeah, C stands for commercial and, yeah, city ordinance for-
With two or three?
Yeah, city ordinance for C two, uh, which is in section two point one nine of our zoning, uh, city ordinances, uh, enti- is entitled Plan Shopping Center District. And its general description is this commercial district is intended to provide a unified grouping in one or more buildings of retail shops, stores and offices, which are planned and developed as an operating unit under a single or multiple ownership. A development will typically contain such features such as shared parking, driveways and common facilities, adequate setbacks and landscaping and sufficient onsite parking for customers and employees. Outdoor storage and display is not permitted, then it goes into the requirements of what is C two. Uh, what you have to do, you know, district use regulations, development regulations, things like that. That's the general idea of what C two is.
Is there any more discussion?
But, yeah, Billy, you, your recommendation is to let them try to work it out and see if they can, there's a win-win for both sides, correct?
Um, yeah, I'd like to see everybody be happy on this. Um, and if it comes back as a spud or a pud, um, with, with, that, you can still have it, the spud governed by C three and, and if he's worried about cer- certain uses, those can be eliminated out of there. And then if he's worried about setbacks or something like those, that can be written in there. Um, the only problem is it takes time. It's gonna take, you know, sixty, ninety days to do that, to, to come back through the system.
I do have problems having one resident tell another resident what they can do with their property.
Okay, based on that, I'm gonna make a motion to deny it.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'm gonna second that.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion?
And, and let me preface this.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want you all to understand, I've heard everything that you've said and I appreciate it, but I do believe that, you know, it's better for us to have an understanding of what's gonna go into that space. And I know, and I've heard what Councilman Favors said with his wife's experience, but I know that it can be done where it can be conditioned upon rezoning it as such. And we're, I, I don't think anybody on this council is telling you that they would be willing to go there depending on what the use of the property was. But to just write a blank check today to openly approve it as C three, I, I just, I don't have the confidence in that right now.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motions and signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention, or one, one opposition.
And you gotta have a roll call vote, sir.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
No.
Mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you all for being here.
Now, Billy, this does not keep them, correct, this is from my knowledge, Dawn, if they wanna listen, that's fine. This does not keep them from revisiting it with you on how we, they could proceed to bring it back, correct?
Um, correct, I think they can, uh, they cannot re- reapply for C three, but they could reapply for six months. They could reapply for a, a S PUD or a pud or a C two.
Which is what we were trying to get to.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Now move to discussion item number four, Mr. Lyon.
Um, public hearing discussion consideration including any amendments surpassing a resolution declaring the structures located at five twelve East Air Coupe Drive a dilapidated building or buildings as defined in MCO da- nine dash two and abatement according, accordingly to the municipal code and setting dates to demolish and remove the structures from the site. Mr. Stroh.
I'm gonna go ahead and jump us off with a question, if you don't mind, type of thing. We've read the materials that were in the packet, I'm sure. But, um, there were animals that were removed from this residence in the condition that's reflected in the photographs that were included in our packet, is that correct?
That is accurate.
Um, and is, am I correct, this is the one where there were a number of animals removed?
That is correct.
Um, and, um, I read the notation that smells could be recognized from this property from twenty-five feet, I believe, was the estimate. And, um, I, having had some conversations about the conditions that those animals were found and living in this residence, um, I just wanted to say again, I'm sorry that you're having to deal with this and I thank you for your efforts to bring this forward. And I'm gonna let you address anything else you wanna address, and I guess this is listed as a public hearing, so if anybody has anything to say on it. Um, but I do, uh, I just wanted to mention to council that there were animals that were living at this residence that were living in these deplorable conditions.
I was out there that day and it was horrendous, horrendous.
So, um, I just wanted to-
I'm sorry? Yes. So you're, I have, uh, current pictures going around right now, a little better, um, as far as what, than what you saw in the packet. The ones in the packet were taken the day we were there. Um, there was a lot of other code violations there as well, as you saw, um, exterior wise, that has all been contracted by our city contractor and cleaned up. Um, but it does, and in the current pictures show some structural issues, um, windows gone, um, bricks missing around the windows, et cetera. Um, I went up there, um, as part of my, um, trying to make sure I have a good understanding before I come and speak because it's my officers that go out to the actual properties. And I can tell you that I got with about ten foot from the structure and I was done. Um, the smell was that bad and luckily it wasn't one of the real hot and windy days. I, I feel for the neighbors that are there. Um, it is, um, structurally gone and living conditions would be impossible without a lot of money to rehab it.
Located, they've not done a single thing to try and fix anything up.
Uh, correct, so the, um, we mailed, we were actually notified of the property by the mortgage company servicing agent. The servicing agent went to post to, um, the occupant, which there was no one there except the animals. The back of the property was wide open and the animals were going in and out. Um, and there was, I believe, twenty-four, um, dogs in the house. So the, you can imagine, I mean, you, you see pictures on the packet. So, um, it was very, very disgusting and bad in and out of the house. Um, we condemned the property and the owner was, uh, did send somebody over to mow after we had sent our contractor over to haul all the debris and, and trash away. Uh, and when there was somebody mowing with the condemned structure, we went over and with our police department and asked where the, who they were doing it for. They gave up where the owner was and they went and arrested the owner at another location, so.
Our city employees take a lot of crap from a lot of people, but they should be commended on this.
Absolutely.
It was, it was, um, our pla- our animal control division is who first went out there and, and they notified us. And so they, they deserve a lot of credit for, for doing their job and, and getting everybody else, uh, as we call it a badge party out there to take care of everything that happened, so, um, all the different divisions were there, including the mayor, so.
Mayor, um, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna defer to you, but, um, I'm gonna go ahead and just put my motion up to approve moving forward.
Your motion would be accepted.
Thank you.
It's not a public hearing, so I mean, it's a-
Yes, it is, sir.
Yes, it is.
According to the agenda.
Okay, this is a public hearing, if I had anything to say. Thank you, everybody, good talking with us. Here is for seeing none, I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor and against?
Aye.
Opposed?
Discussion consideration for adoption including any possible amendment. I have awarding entered to a contract for the construction of the tactical burn building at the police and fire training center located off of southeast Fifteenth Street behind the city and Midwest City Public Works Department to Lone Star Tactical Building LLC in the Mount at five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, eight hundred and six dollars and three cents.
Can I ask something of staff? When, because I met the general contractor in the back, when we know that we're gonna have a guest here, can we move stuff like this up towards the front? In that way, we keep our guests from, I mean, unless their attorneys get paid by the hour, they don't care if they're sitting there.
We can do our best to facilitate that.
That was a request directly from the chief.
Should've made it earlier, chief.
I know.
Public hearings are required to go first. Is that true?
I'll defer to the city attorney.
City attorney's got a lot of research to do, that's all I got to tell you.
Did, did we provide for a thorough Westlaw package for the city attorney for this upcoming budget year because he's gonna need it?
All we've heard is bus tracks over in the back.
Okay, so, I, I have one question about this, chief, if you don't mind. I saw in the materials, I've, I've lost that side of the horseshoe. I saw in the materials that, uh, Lone Star Tactical Buildings LLC was the only bidder for this, um, burn building. Um, and are you comfortable with them?
Absolutely. We reached out to three others to get them to make sure that we bid this in two separate, this item and the next one in two separate, to make sure that the people bidding on the waterline extension and the building of the, uh, traditional classroom and this non-traditional burn building would be separate and so the two wouldn't get in the mean, we get a good product on both. Um, and this was the only one that responded back. I talked to two out of the others that we sent to, and they just, one of them wanted more time, um, possibly to do it, but they said it would come in a formal request, and we never heard anything from them, so, um, absolutely. This company, um, probably, well, we, in two thousand eighteen, we voted. At twenty-twenty, we, twenty-twenty, the end of, we made rounds to look at some of the buildings, and we went and looked at this company, and they do very good products. So they're out of Houston, Texas. Uh, it was a group of firefighters that started business putting this together. They were all training officers, training these burn buildings, so they just turned around and started building them, so.
Thank you. That was my own question. I'd move to approve. Second.
I've got a motion and I got a second. Any further discussion? Thanks for enduring our municipal government lesson. All in favor, indicate saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Since you've endured all this, do you have anything to say to the council?
I would say no, we can get out.
Once you've gotten what you want, you can say yes, sir. All right. Thank you, Chief.
No, no, one more. Discussion consideration for adoption, including any possible amendment of awarding and entering to a contract for the construction of the police and fire training center located off southeast fifteenth, behind the city of Midwest City Public Works Department to Shiloh Enterprises in the amount of three million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Shiloh is the company that built the animal shelter.
And they're doing the W P Atkinson Park right now, too.
Any questions?
Well, I have a statement to make, and this, this goes back to the agenda item prior to the, the doghouse, where on fifteenth street. We moved these, this facility to protect that neighborhood and the integrity of it over there. So, this is, in, you know, it's not like we're trying to not let people off of Mead sell their property, but the people over there were pretty loud, and we, uh, we ended up moving it because we did try to protect that neighborhood. And it goes right back into why we decided to do what we did a little bit ago. Was to protect that neighborhood.
Any further questions or statements?
Hold on, I have a question real quick. I looked at some of the notes like other training centers. Is this comparable? Like, the six bids that I saw, this was, Shiloh was the lowest. But is this comparable to the other training, fire training centers in Oklahoma, price-wise, like per square foot?
Oh. I don't know how it falls price per square foot. I mean, it's-
Yeah, I mean, we actually received seven on this, and we've got, um, and one of them didn't give any, um, references, so that dropped it down to the six, and Shiloh happened to be the, the lowest bidder, but I don't know, price-wise. And I do know that originally when we talked about it, because of what Councilman Byrne says, and the moving of the property from one to the other, uh, we had to go back and do some assessments, because there was a lot more money that was needed, and we had to go back to an election again for that. Um, and at that time, our estimate, our estimation was that that, the building classroom portion alone would be around four point two million dollars. So we were excited to see that they came in considerably under bid. Um, and it's hard to tell, Oklahoma City just bid theirs out, but that's a seventy million dollar project. Their burn facility alone, where ours is under six hundred, theirs is at four million. So it just depends on apples to apples what they're getting in the building. Ours has a classroom, the seats, about twenty-five students, and then we've got a conference room right off to the side of there. And then we've got a restroom with a locker room for his and hers, um, for anybody that's doing training with this police and fire out there. And then we have an exterior bathroom, so they don't have to come into the building when police and fire are doing training outside and disrupt everything in the classroom. And a very minimal kitchenette with a ice machine to, for water and stuff, so I don't know how it-
It did come in within engineering estimate. Correct. Well, well below. I mean, we're, you know, about, you know, seven, eight hundred thousand below what we originally would. The arc, Kirk Patrick is the estimator that put it in for the geo bond when we went back out.
Did you deal with the animal shelter, too? The same company, though, right?
No, I'm the architect.
Okay.
This is, uh, David Omen with the Guernsey, so they did the architecture. Go ahead. Their, their firm did the MAC, that facility. Go ahead and see if he can answer Megan's question.
What was the question, one more time?
Oh, you remember. Square footage, price per square footage, when I was comparing to other fire training centers such as Wasso, which I know theirs is a lot larger, but is it comparable price per square foot to others that you've designed?
What's currently going on in the market right now, and the type of structure that this is for the square foot that we, that the chief and the, the police and fire needed, it is an app- apples to apples comparison. Now, like the chief mentioned, that there are other training facilities that are a lot larger, they have more complexities, more things. Obviously, those are a lot higher square foot costs.
Okay, all right, that was it.
Any further questions?
I'm actually gonna ask one more, sorry. Um, and I know that this was part of our geo bond, um, for twenty-eighteen. But, um, I'm assuming that the training center won't always be continuously in use as a training center type of thing. Um, I know that we had talked about having maybe some other municipalities that would come in and use the training facility also.
For the classroom side?
Uh-huh.
Um, correct. We're gonna try and work, this is a joint venture between us and the police departments. So, um, Sid had sent Greg over, so Greg has worked with us and sat through all the meetings. Between their training needs and our training needs, we'll see how that blends and what else can be there. But we do have intentions for, uh, bringing in some training, and it would allow others to come in there as well. There's a lot of things that the city manager and I have talked about, the potential uses for that, that we don't have a lot of the details worked out, to allow those others to come in and use, um, along with us as well, having people there to make sure everything's taken care of, so.
But our intent is to bring in national trainers that will, then will market to the fire departments out of state, the region, the southwest region, that's kinda how they, they all work, the southwest region. And they'll come in and utilize the Reed Center, utilize the New Delta, our other hotels in town. So that is, that is the goal, and that's-
I recall that from our discussions when this was in its, I'll call it foundational period. I guess the thought that popped into my head, too, was just about, um, opportunity for community engagement at this facility type of thing, if it wasn't going to be in continuous use. Um, and, excuse me. This goes to a broader question that I've had with regard to, um, like, um, right now, for example, Citizens Academy uses the community center, um, and the neighborhood services center, like, if it was possible to have them also use that facility, if it was possible to have, um, maybe some training type of thing done by police or fire for issues for citizens type of thing, that would give it also a, um, a community, um, application, is what I'm gonna say, and so that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, I think absolutely. I mean, whatever the, the guidelines from what I understand, as long as you have staff there that sponsored the event or whatever, like, the neighborhood association meets at Mike's building, the Citizens Police Academy, they can use that building absolutely, 'cause we've had some requests, uh, in the years past, we've had the amateur radio group that does a lot for us during Veterans Day Parade, and does a lot for Fourth of July. Uh, does weekend storm siren checks. They, they've used those buildings as well, um, over time, as long as we're there.
And I was also wondering, I know, for example, just really quickly, and then I'll shut up so we can move on, but, um, like, the smoke detector distribution and stuff, and a lot of times, um, you know, fire personnel have went into communities and they're distributing those smoke detectors at no cost to citizens, and also installing them or whatever. But, um, like, some safety courses on fire prevention or something, particularly when we have the cold weather and a lot of people turn to using, what's the word that I'm looking for?
Space heaters.
Thank you, thank you. And just something that also would give it some community engagement with the training facility, so it gives an opportunity to have that sort of symbiotic relationship between police and fire and communities, so.
So they do, and we have, you know, we, the, pre-COVID, we used to offer friends and family CPR training, and then when COVID, we slowed that down and really stopped it, just from people coming into the building, having our, our people exposed to the public, the public exposed to our people from what they're responding on. So we have every intention of starting to get those programs bucking back up again, and, and that helps, the friends and family CPR does with any, it's not a daycare certification CPR, but we do family, as it says, if you're what, got new loved ones, young ones in the house, uh, grandparents, things like that, we do teach them CPR, so.
Thank you, chief.
Any other questions? Chair to entertain a motion. Uh, motion and a second, all in favor, indicate saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction motion carries. Thanks, chief. Thanks for taking it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item number seven, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration of a quarterly update on the progress of the execution of the general obligation bond projects. This is an informational item only. Council had requested at the last meeting for Mr. Sullivan to provide an update. Any questions for Mr. Sullivan?
I asked for this in particular, as Tim's nodding. And, um, I was delighted to see where we are on these geo bond projects. Um, I can't wait, um, for us to get to completion this fall. Several things should come to fruition, and hopefully we'll have the golf course staffed, so we can get that open. And so I just wanted to, um, take this opportunity to thank, um, staff, and in particular, Mr. Sullivan, who's been spearheading the geo bond, um, projects to fruition type of thing, and all the headaches that come along with those type of thing, so.
Appreciate those compliments. Uh, this staff, it has worked very closely together, uh, all the departments to, to make this happen, and it, none of it would have happened without council support. And all the efforts that Mr. Lyon and Mr., and Mayor Dukes, uh, did to, um, make sure this community, I believe it was close to fifty community meetings they did together, uh, to make sure they understood what they were voting on, and, uh, they, uh, supported us and you with their vote, and, uh, it has been a, it has been a lot of fun, honestly, delivering these projects for this community, and we should all be proud of what we've done.
I'm gonna have to find some other projects for Mr. Sullivan.
He will. I guarantee you, he's already got a whole list of them, I'm sure.
Are you, are you familiar with Westlaw at all, Mr. Sullivan?
I know what it is. I know it's software that, that, that you attorneys use to do research. But, uh, yeah, uh, th- th- these projects have transformed this community and put us on the map. And, um, we will, I, I, I think, Tim, I can go ahead and say this about the golf course. We, we plan to have a soft opening July the ninth. Um, and then, yeah. Mr. Denny, our, our, our pro is gearing up toward that. It, it will be tough. It'll be a struggle. We don't have the staff that we would like to have, but, uh, we need to get open. We need the revenue. Uh, and the golf course has grown insufficiently to do that, and, uh, they've all committed to making it happen. Uh, and then we're gonna have a big party for everyone. Uh, tentatively, that's set for July the twenty-second, Friday afternoon, or Friday morning, the twenty-second, Josh, is that correct? Josh and Larry are planning, and his staff are planning a big party. So, uh-
Should we bring our drivers?
You will need, I'm quite confident, some sort of golfing equipment, uh, as is, uh, Josh's tradition, to, um, kick that thing off and, and, uh, make it official, so.
Okay, no actions needed on that particular item, so thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Move on to discussion item number eight.
Discussion consideration of adopting any possible amendment to the collective bargain agreement between the city of Midwest City and the International Association of Firefighters, I A F F. Local twenty-sixty-six is negotiated to be effective July one, twenty-twenty-two through June thirty, twenty-twenty-five. This'll be a six percent cost of living in the first year, two percent in the second year, and zero percent in the third year.
Any questions or comments?
Three, I'm sorry, six and three and zero. I'm, I'm on the wrong contract, sorry.
If not, then, uh, Chair to entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction motion carries. Next item, number nine.
We don't need an executive. Number nine, or D B two, one in the same discussion consideration approving, including any possible amendment, a six point oh percent across the board increase to the base salary of city employees not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, to be effective July one, twenty-twenty-two.
Mr. Lyons, I'd like to address something on that, that, uh, we amend what is currently in the discussion item and add the language. If you look at the second line where it says base salary, go base salary of, add the word full-time city employees, and add regular part-time city employees not covered by the collective bargaining agreement to be effective July first, twenty-twenty-two. What that covers is we have some non-seasonal, basically full-time, part-time employees, and this will grant them the same raise.
That's correct. There were some questions within the par- the body of the paragraph that Troy had done, and this'll just clarify.
I second that proposed amendment, if you need it.
Well, I need a motion.
Motion. Go, go ahead.
To indicate the commitment.
I'll make a mo- motion as, as I-
That's motion with him.
Do you need a copy of what I wrote? You have it? I can't come up with that stuff.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction motion carries. Now move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council?
I do need to bring up one thing that we omitted earlier on. It was in, in the consent agenda, but just for the citizens to hear. From, for the month of July, August, and September, we will not have council meetings in this council chamber. It will be under construction, under renovation. So we will be in the court, the municipal courtroom, and as a backup, then we would be over at the community center, but that's our plan, is to be in the court. Better, better set up over there. It's already set up, and we can adjust to it.
And there's no need for the executive session, as I understand it?
No need at this time for the executive session.
No further business to bring before the council. We are hereby adjourned. I call it order, the Midwest City Municipal Authority, we have consent agenda, these items are placed on consent agenda, so that the trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, or if the unanimous consent cannot be received, then the item, the item or items will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction motion carries. Discussion item number one, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration of entering into an agreement, including any possible amendment with De Palma Hotel and Resorts to provide qualified management services at the Sheridan Midwest City Hotel and Reed Conference Center. Yes. Yeah, it's just, it, it, it is, it is a preferred method, though, under the authority, we can enter into multi-year contracts. We prefer not to, and this is at the, this is at their request. It is, it's, yeah, uh, people, the ownership of hotels, they're one-year management contracts. Then, uh, they're renewable, sometimes auto-renewed, but they're renewable.
Any further discussion or questions? Chair to entertain a motion to approve? I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction motion carries. We now move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing or saying none, we are hereby adjourned, and I call it order, the Midwest City Municipal Authority, we do have a consent agenda, and once again, these items are placed on consent agendas. Trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, or unanimous consent cannot be received, then the item or items will be removed and heard in regular order. then the item or items will be removed and heard in regular order. Charity entertain a motion to approve. Motion and a second, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Extentions, motion carries. Discussion item number one, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration of adoption, including any possible amendment of the consultant agreement with Capital Decisions, Inc., in the total amount of ninety thousand dollars to continue to provide consultant services regarding economic, community development, and redevelopment interest in Midwest City for the period from July first, two thousand twenty-two, through June thirty, two thousand twenty-three. Any questions on this? It's the same consultant we've used for many years that helped us recently get the earmark for the booster, water booster station, water well rehab, and a water tower at, um, Timber Ridge.
You know, we, we, uh, kinda put his feet to the fire a couple of years ago, and I think that fire really came to light.
One plus two helped, helped, the earmarks came back.
Yeah, the earmarks are critical.
It was kind of a perfect storm.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Extension motion carries. Now move into new business public discussion, does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned.